...Mass?
Here.
Alderperson Van Campen?
Here.
Alderperson Wilken?
Here.
Alderperson Boonstra?
Here.
Alderperson Brannick?
Here.
Alderperson Bergerat?
Here.
Very good, and at this time we say the Pledge of Allegiance and our flag is at the front of the room, and we'll all stand together and say,
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. We can go on to appointments, there are none for this evening, and then recognition of volunteers, we don't have any there. Communication from visitors, I do have a couple people that want to speak, and this is in communication that is not on the agenda for consideration. So, I have Dave, hold on, I'm gonna butcher the last name. There we go. Thank you, if you'd like to speak.
Sure. I would like to speak regarding, I'm coming from the American Hotel.
Okay.
I heard about the location, if you're the city of Fulton, trying to open about the liquor store, the one, it's a closed building right next to the other one. To be honest, I prefer if we have some kind of pretty good receding restaurant, because what I hear from the guests at our hotel, they have to drive all the way to the Clinton instead of that location. If we move somewhere, another convenient location to the, somewhere other side where it used to be a gas station, or maybe another one in the Fulton downtown, that will help to our guests also, and the community also, to drive instead of coming from here to the, all the way to that location. So I prefer if we have some kind of pretty good restaurant, that's what our guests like also.
Very good. Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you.
And at this time, we have the presentation from the Illinois Route 30 group and the North River Road Project in Clinton. Who would like to begin? I think Dave's gonna begin. All right, very good.
Thank you. My name's David Rose, and back in '06, a bunch of us kinda put together a trip to go to DC.
David, you need to talk louder, else we keep your hand, do you?
Anyhow, we decided to go to DC, not knowing anything about DC, and when we got there, they said to us, you have to have a regional approach, and so we put together a program of Comanche, Clinton, and Fulton, because we were told that what is good for Fulton is good for Comanche, and what is good for Clinton is good for Fulton, and everything. So that's how this group started. Groups like us are all over the country, and they go to DC to lobby and help the community. I think what's exceptional this year is, I'd like to introduce our group, I'll start with Barb Sewell, she's in Illinois, we're so fortunate to have her, because she loves Highway 30, and boy, that's what it takes.
They all know that.
Next is Chuck and Brenda Thornton, they own Sweetheart Bakery in Clinton.
We all love that, too.
Yeah, very good place to go for a donut, I'm telling you. Dennis Lover, and every one of these people bring expertise for all of us. Dennis is a good friend of Charles Grassley, so we need that connection. And it's probably very unusual for you to have Tom Dederman, House Representative for the state of Iowa, and believe you me, even though it's in Iowa, it helps Illinois, because we are all working on getting the 20 miles done in Illinois. That puts us on a four-lane road coast to coast. So this time, and we didn't go because of COVID, we came up with a brand-new booklet, and this is how much work it took for us to go to DC. This was weeks and weeks and weeks, and we all get paid big bucks to do this, too, no bucks, you know? And we're calling it the Golden Triangle, and I really believe this, Fulton, Clinton, and Comanche are the Golden Triangle, and there's other parts of Wisconsin now, Nebraska, Minnesota, all coming up with their Golden Triangles, and we've got it, it's so important to us. So just to kick this off, we'll start with Barb, would you like to start first?
I'd happily, I'm not bored then, they all know this, and I don't wanna preach to the choir, but I just want you to know, stay right here, please. The onset to getting on our bridge, that was in such a terrible, terrible, terrible shape, would not have happened without David Rose, because David was a road commissioner, and in Iowa, we have a whole different situation than we do here. We have districts that our district engineers handle, and our district is District 2, but in Iowa, they have a board that are called road commissioners, and then they have one overseer that is the head of transportation. However, the road commission makes all the decisions on what gets done and what does not get done in Iowa. And so, we had to go tons and tons of meetings constantly to get it across Iowa, and bless Edith Pfeffer's heart and soul, she ran Highway 30 for our entire state of Iowa, just worked her head off trying to get that done, and she's passed away, but her legacy lives on, and we're not gonna let the last 42 miles go undone. That guy sitting back there, he even showers with the Highway 30 button on his coat. I mean, seriously, he doesn't go anywhere without Highway 30, because it is so important. And so when we had this terrible broken-up mess getting onto our bridge over here, I said, David, he was still a road commissioner, since this is an Iowa bridge, I said, can't you get ahold of Illinois DOT, can't you get something done, this thing is a mess? It didn't take very long, it was like a month, and we had this done, because he was the chairman of the commission at the time. So Iowa has only given us one road commissioner on this very most eastern part of Iowa ever, and he's been hit. And so, now we don't have one over here again, so we just have to work a lot harder, keeping in front of the commission, because once you don't have a body sitting there on the panel, you know, you're forgotten. So, we don't let that happen. And every single solitary mile is important to us, because across America, in 1913, this Highway 30 was all planned out, and it ran all the way from New York City to San Francisco, And by 1915, in July, a convoy of army trucks traveled this route, two and a half years, and the whole entire road across America, Highway 30, was built. And so, it's quite a different story now, and the cost per mile is exorbitant, and there's so many things to do, but we do have a shovel-ready project. We have to get this done on these 19 miles, because it's coming across America, and we're going to be the missing link. So when Iowa finishes the 42 miles, and we still have 19 to connect, this is just plain ridiculous. It just can't happen, we have to finish this corridor. And so we've gone to a modified way of doing it, and we're calling it the Rural Four Concept, and, dang, I should've had that page ready. But with that, we cannot disturb Morrison, which they don't want to be disturbed, so we're going to bring the highway, according to what we wanna do, to their border, and we're gonna drive through Morrison, leave it just as it is, and pick it up again with four lanes as you come out into the other side, on the eastern side. That way, we'll not only have a lot less expense, we'll take up a lot less farmland, and everybody should live happily ever after, and yet we'll still achieve our goal of connecting. 19, 20.2 miles is what we have. With this Highway 30 connector to 80, a major transport hub is from Cedar Rapids to Chicago, major. If this highway is done, it will alleviate so much of the overburden on Interstate 80, and we all know that has to happen. And so the truckers will cut off one and a half hours of actual travel time. There'll be less fuel used, it will be a whole lot less wear and tear on 80, because now 30's gonna pick up this slack, and it's just gonna make it us, a place people wanna come and visit, because right now, we are a bypass. It's that simple, we are a bypass. They will not come this way, they will go down 80, continue to go across east and west. So we need the gas tax money, and we also need to get this road finished, so we're gonna keep on, and I think our DC trip was very successful, very proud that Mayor Wendy went along. She learned a lot, I know that, and I think she's going to have a lot of nice payday coming after the 1st of the year for the city of Fulton. So, you don't get a call and ask, hey, Mayor Wendy, you need any dollars this year? We got a few extra thousand to dump your way. That doesn't happen. So we have to be well-known out there, we have to continue to go, we have to be in their face and get the staffers again knowing us so well, like they always have in the past. That's super, super important. And so I'm hoping this continues, and that all of you support the effort, and any of you come along with us, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll let Representative Tom come up next, because he's working on Highway 30 as well, speaking of, believe it or not, the governors talk to each other, so, but very good to have both sides.
I'm Tom Dederman, I'm the state, new state representative for District 69, which actually goes from Jackson County to Scott County, the eastern side of Clinton County. And I was fortunate, I'm vice chair of the House Transportation Committee, I was very fortunate the speaker put me on that committee, which was pretty appropriate. On Highway 30 in Iowa, I put a bill in, do four-lane Highway 30, and got it through committee, and hopefully the speaker let me run that next year. Said he wouldn't let me run it this year, because I didn't have one in the Senate, so I'm working on the Senate to, Chair of the Transportation in the Senate to get it passed there, so. I think we've got good news on getting 30, and I think Iowa and Illinois both played this off for the last 30 years, when they do it, we'll do it, and vice versa, so whoever goes first, we don't care, we just wanna keep moving ahead.
Just keep holding hands, right?
Yep. And it's so important to go to Washington, especially, they like to see elected officials, they like to see mayors, and I'm the first state representative that's even gone out, we haven't seen them, but it's a coincidence that Senator Grassley is my speaker's grandfather, so we have a little tie, I'm telling the grandson, tell grandpa we need this, and then I go out there, and I tell grandpa, tell your grandson, let me run my bills. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Tom, or Chuck, and Brenda, would you like to come up and speak?
For those of you who don't know, my husband and I, we own Homer's Deli and Sweetheart Bakery, stones throw across the river. We learned a long time ago that what is good for our neighbor is also good for us, that's why when Dick Abbott came to work, when he sold his bakery, he came to work for us, and I let Fulton Schools know that we wanted to be Fulton's Bakery, and so we've just kind of had a relationship with that. Chuck and I are on the North River Drive Committee, and I know you guys obviously all live in Fulton, but to give you 30 seconds of what we're talking about, we would like to take the riverfront downtown and extend that, and I won't use street numbers, but at Wendy's, where it cuts off, and it comes across the little creek thing there, and we would extend that up to a block north of Main Avenue, and our riverfront drive would then have a north end. Instead of our riverfront drive being a little less than three miles, it would be a little more than six miles, but it would be exactly the same thing. We've been talking about this for several years, and people say, oh, no, I don't want our bike path to be hurt, and that, and we're gonna make it cement instead of the crookedy blacktop that it is, it's still gonna be a two-lane road, there won't be as much parking as downtown, but it's going to be just an extension of that. And I think something that Clinton and Fulton both have in common is, our river is our greatest asset, and I can't speak for you guys, but I can speak for us folks in Clinton, we do not use it as an asset. When we were here today, kind of talking about Washington DC, and that, that was probably my seventh trip out there, and it is all about building relationships. Senator Canoyer, who does Clinton in the Quad Cities, and Representative Miller Meeks last summer toured our area, we're looking across the river, and she's like, whoa, that windmill is cool, you know, the windmill is cool, look up there, there's the lock-and-dam, we noticed condos up on the hill. So again, we're a state apart, but we're not really a state apart, we're with this gem that we don't use dividing us. And on that tour, again, I met these folks, you know, a couple of years ago, when we were in DC, and we're showing them the project, and I said, you know, we're looking at the river, we're looking at Fulton, and I said, no, turn around. So we turned around, and if anybody has been over at the end of Main Avenue, where McElany Motors used to be, besides the sawmill, it looks like a frickin' war zone over there, and why does it look like that? Because 55 years ago, they moved the bridge, and they created a dead end over there, which means 60% of our business district is at the end of a dead end, therefore, on North Second Street, if you're coming up North Second Street, why would you turn right and head towards the river? There are some nice places down there, but nobody drives by them. So I think tonight, again, I don't need to explain what North River Drive, it's in another state, but it's all about relationship building, and when we invited Wendy to go with us this year to DC, I know she kinda went, well, but, well, you know, really, you know, really, you've gotta get these relationships started, when these people come to your community, they do, they leave. When Miller Meeks and Canoyer left about a month and a half later, hey Brenda, we found you guys, you needed $850,000 to do it, can you find $200,000 somewhere else if we give you $650? Yes, we can. And again, it's all about relationship building, so I appreciate your time, and thank you.
David, I just wanna add, as a member of that group, I've never seen a harder-working group in my entire life. We didn't sleep very much, and we went and visited so many of the representatives on both sides. We went to everybody in Illinois, and we went to everyone in Iowa, and all of us attended all of the things. And so it showed to me that we're in a position of holding hands and working together, and I am telling you, I'm very supportive of the North River Drive, it does show off our beautiful windmill, I could see condos over there, population over there, and the more that we have over there are only the more that will come over here and utilize our businesses. So we need to work together to get that done, and so we're working as hard as we can, aren't we, David? And so now Dennis Lover wants to talk.
Mr. Lover.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm the policy nerd, so delved into some policy issues. At some point, I, you know, and they're right, as I told you about relationships, and so in addition to having worked for Senator Grassley back in the 80s, relationship years ago developed now with a person that's now United States Secretary of Agriculture, VILSEC, and so he arranged for Tom and I to meet over at his office, and I think of the eight people or nine people that were in the room or online, there was a former member of Congress from Iowa that we talked to while we were there, five of those other people have the title of Chief of Staff, and we were dealing with some pretty high-level people within the Department of Agriculture, and we talked about the things that have been discussed here, both on Iowa and Illinois side, and even farther down beyond that, hey, you know, if there, if, I'm paraphrasing, but if there's ever a project, or downtown redevelopment project that maybe Fulton dreams of and wants to do, let us know. They've got a bucket of money within the US Department of Agriculture. You know what, Highway 30 comes out of transportation money, we're the Department of Ag, we'll happily write a letter of support, telling Governor Pritzker, you ought to do this, and we'll happily get involved and support that because of the impact that it has. We got into a policy discussion with them, and it was a repeat of discussion ad with other elected officials when we were out there, and I complained to them about that, for example, rural housing, and I challenged those people, I said, do any of you actually know a housing developer, or do you only know the lobbyist from the Housing Builders Association, or somebody from the National Association of Realtors? Do any of you actually know a banker, or do you only know the lobbyist with the, you know, the National Banking Association? And I told them, I said, this has been a while ago, but one day in front of 900 people, some guy named Newton Gingrich from Georgia stood up and said, Dennis knows what he's talking about when it comes to housing in rural America. And that was my mistake, because the lady next to me, Chief of Staff, said, put it all in writing and give it to me. So I had to answer that one, my fault, but then she got 20 pages of my detailed thought on what we need to do to help rural America, because the solution in Oswego, or the solution in Mankato, Minnesota, or St. Cloud, whatever, isn't the right, isn't the same solution for places like this, and we need to, and they gotta think that and understand that, and to their credit, they were open to that. We did, for example, delved into one issue with good intentions, somebody in Washington DC came up with some rules that relates to the medicine that veterinarians have. Now, the drugs that a veterinarian would use to get a puppy or a cat ready for surgery is the same medicine that they would use to get a horse or a cow ready for surgery. Obviously, the horse, cow stuff, a lot more powerful, but it's the same medicine. And so, with good intentions, somebody in Washington DC said, we gotta, new rules gotta be in place for veterinarians. And the price of these safes, within two weeks, went from $600 to over $23,000, because the compliance industry very quickly responded and created a lot of issues. And so, by the end of the week, and I said, you know, with good intentions, you're getting ready to rewrite the rules and try to clamp down on fentanyl, realize that there are some of those drugs that are added to fentanyl are what veterinarians use, we gotta do something. You gotta talk and understand we're rural vets. And by the end of the week, as we were headed to the airport, Grassley's staff said, Senator Grassley just got an amendment passed on a bill related to fentanyl to say veterinarians are exempt from these rules. And other, it goes back to those relationships, kind of thing, well, as it turns out, the well-intended person within the federal government that came up with that rule was my roommate from my sophomore year of college in Sioux City, Iowa. So I had lunch with Will, and I yelled at him, and understood, he, good intentions, but again, I said, Will, you grew up in Kingsley, Iowa, how could you have forgotten all of that? Well, I've been in Washington DC for 25 years, you know, and those kind of relationships, though, are extremely important. Tom, I think Barb was there, David, myself, we're in a meeting room one day out in Washington DC, and I laughed, because we had dinner right at the Capitol Hill Club, and across from there is Cannon House Office Building, and our MRS meeting, and we said, you know, we'd really kinda liked to find a way to get better marinas in Clinton and Fulton, and later from Senator Grassley's staff said, did you not read this morning's Congressional Record? The main story, brand-new national program of money intended to help communities build better marinas. And one of us who shall remain nameless, Iowa Hawkeye fan in the back room, or one of us made the comment, well, normal people don't read the Congressional Record, but no, we didn't know that. By the time we were done, $6 million back to Clinton and Fulton, and a very angry senator from, who was Trent Lott, who was Senate Republican Leader from Mississippi, because his intention, wink, wink, was to steer as much of that money back to Mississippi without calling it in earpiece, and two little towns in the middle of nowhere got all $6 million that he wanted back in Mississippi. So those relationships and working and building are very effective, and so it was very helpful to have her along with us, but USDA staff, when you're ready, ask, we're ready to give some money and make some stuff happen. So, last thing was just, Dave brought up a couple of times, there was some legislation, hey, federal government, you need to get involved with school resource officers, help local communities, help local school districts protect themselves, and the response from that delegation was, yep, we're on board, we get it, and even by the end of the week, there were, you know what, they've signed on, they've amended, they've added on to some legislation to try and help address that issue. So, it's working and having those relationships that move stuff done. So, I'll shut up, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And a quick closing, House, we wanna know how successful we were for the state of Illinois, the last time it was, what, 8 million?
Seven and a half million.
And the study on Highway 30, this 20 miles, is done, and that study's only good for another...
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years, I'm gonna ask to be redone, so I think we really have to push hard to get this done. So, that's the end, thank you.
I just thank all of Fulton, all the time, for supporting. I come in here, I ask for a resolution, I always get it. You all get the picture, we need to get the traffic this way, we need to get the people this way. Once they come here, they know, we have the most beautiful part of the entire state, but it's just the initial getting them here, and if we don't have these four-lane, 19 miles done, it's just never gonna happen. So we've gotta continue to keep working hard together.
And this group has decided to be dedicated to go back again, and again, and again, until we get the job done. So, that was the resolution.
Thank you very much for listening to us, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey. I was just gonna say, you can wonderfully say, but you can screw us. We need to go on to, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in your packet, and that's the council meeting minutes and the bill list. And are there any questions or corrections? There, you do?
I have a correction.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't like this. On page four, Dan Dolan closing, the loan payout was $28,502, actually it was $285,000.
Oh, you missed, we had a comma difference, don't we?
No, you're missing, you're missing a zero, too. 28,000 versus 285,000.
Somewhere. Tammy, 285,000 what?
And $2.57.
Okay, so we were just missing the comma and a zero. Okay. Motion to approve the minutes with corrections. Come on, a second, a second. And any other questions? Then Tori, can I have one more? Alderperson Bergerat?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mass? Yes. Van Campen?
Yes.
Boonstra?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Brannick?
Yes.
Very good, now we move on to the business section, this is what we discussed last meeting, so all of these we've discussed, and kind of said we put them on as a motion. First one up is a motion to approve the purchase of a 2023 Tahoe from the State Center, Iowa.
So, move.
All right. Any questions? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Alderperson Banker?
Yes.
Berggraff?
Yes.
Bronde?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Benhampton?
Yes.
Mass?
Yes.
Bousta?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Very good. We move on to B, and that's a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 72 entitled Parking Schedules of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Fulton. And that was on page 27. Do you have a motion?
So move.
And support. And are there any questions? If not, roll call, please. Open.
The motion as presented could be for not including Seventh Avenue and Ninth Street. That Seventh Avenue and Ninth Street would go on to the next motion. So this motion would be for the Seventh Street from Tenth Avenue to Thirteenth Avenue and Eleventh Avenue, from Tenth Street to Fourteenth Streets.
So we're adding stop signs at the Seventh?
So the, on the backside, so C, motion to approve, would be added stop, so you would be adding stop signs for a four-way stop at...
The Seventh and Ninth.
Seventh Avenue and Ninth Street.
Got it.
Tenth Street, Seventh Avenue, and approving the temporary stop sign at Twelfth Street. So the first motion is the Seventh Street, Tenth Avenue to Thirteenth Avenue, Eleventh, it's just written, not written correctly.
Cross, cross off the top, all right? We have that in a second. Support. With those corrections, have roll call, please.
Alderperson King?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Mass?
Yes.
Berggraff?
Yes.
Benhampton?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Bousta?
Yes.
Bronde?
Yes.
Okay, and now we go on to letter C, a motion to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 71. And this is entitled, The Traffic Schedules of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Fulton. We are adding Seventh Street and Ninth Street, adding stop signs for a four-way stop to Tenth Street and Seventh Avenue, and a stop sign at Twelfth Street in front of the middle school.
Is Seventh Street and Ninth Avenue, right? Ninth Street?
Seventh Avenue and Ninth Street. So water tunnel intersection.
Yes.
Yeah. You would set Seventh Street and Ninth Street.
Okay. Seventh Avenue and Ninth Street.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. House support. Any other questions or corrections? Then roll call, please.
Alderperson Bousta?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Mass?
Yes.
Benhampton?
Yes.
Berggraff?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Bronde?
Yes.
Bousta?
Yes.
Bronde?
Yes.
Very good. Now we go on to the committee of the whole discussion. And right now, it's a continuation of discussing our ordinance on liquor licenses. The map enclosed shows the only areas where the liquor licenses can be located. We did have that question come up, and I just wanted to highlight, there can't be liquor store on every corner. It can only be located in the yellow on the map. So that clarified some of the questions, but then I'm going to leave the rest up to the group for discussion. We talked about limiting the license, we talked about adding to the license, we talked about no limits, and so...
Were you able to find the cost, that would have cost what we pay every time we have to amend an ordinance, and how often we've done that in the past?
How much is it for an ordinance depending, just average?
It depends on your time spent on it. A quarter of a billable hour of a simple ordinance to several hours, that's what it would cost. So when you add, that's probably a quarter of an hour, one at 150 hours, so it's costing about $40 each time you do it. Am I billable rate?
I don't know.
Is that 40 or 50?
So 50 bucks. Is that what you found it to be, Tammy?
I can't hear what you're saying.
Okay. We should shut that fan off. Do you remember how much it costs for, for, from bill to change ordinances? And I know it depended upon the size of the ordinance, but say, the liquor licenses. I know that you were the ones that...
Oh, when he just did a, changed the amount of the liquor, I think it was like $25.
Okay. So, there we go. That's more.
Well, I think, I did a, this last week, and I collected from nine cities in the area with their liquor license ordinance. And I think before we can even think about giving out any more liquor license, our code for liquor license needs to be updated. There's some of them that are 1982, and a lot of things have changed. And the laws have changed, so I think...
What do you mean by that? The code?
Our code of ordinance, in the book that we have to go buy for alcohol, liquor license.
But changed how?
Like, it needs to be updated bad. We don't even have, we have a B, B1, and C and D. It's not even our code of ordinance. C and D in them, it's not even listed.
Those would have been amendments that were done by individual ordinances to amend the code.
I don't have any amendments.
But they're not codified right now in your books, because your books have not been recodified in a very long time.
Since 2009...
2019.
We don't have the current codes in your book. So just to even get that updated alone is correct.
Yes. And there's also, I have a question in there. It's about a 2,000 bond, $2,000 bond is supposed to be accompanied by an application for a liquor license that's supposed to be paid to the city. Have we ever collected that?
I'm going to ask Renee.
Well, like I said, I've been doing it for a very long time, and that's the way that it was passed to me, and that's the way I've always done it, is we've asked for a surety bond for the liquor license through the insurance company, which we have, which we do get. As far as paying that to the city, I'm not, I think it's...
Just a bond.
Right, it's not...
It only gets paid if your license gets taken away.
Correct. But that's... I think it's written, kind of confusing, but...
In our code of ordinance books, which this will be dated for this particular one, back to 1982, it says, each application for a license or renewal, there shall be accompanied by a bond in the penal sum of $2,000 payable to the city, with good and sufficient surety acceptable to the city. So, have we ever done it?
No.
Not since I've been here in, since 2000.
No.
I mean, that's, that's one of the things that needs to be updated.
Yes. And the other thing is, which Renee, it's done a very good job with the liquor license, but it says it here, the city clerk is in charge of that. We need to put Renee in there.
Right.
So, and she's been doing it since 2007, and it has never been updated.
Dan recognized that when I started and talked to Renee, but you are correct, we should have it in our code book.
It has to be, yeah. And the other thing is the license fees. We should all look at that.
We need to look at those.
So before we do anything, my suggestion is, is that we review this and come back and understand, before we even give out anything, we review this and get this done. That's my opinion.
What was the average cost for licenses of the nine towns?
1,500 for the initial license, and then for a Sunday, two hours, there was a two hours, and then there's noon, yeah, noon to 10, 375 was added on to the 1,500. And then for the two-hour, it was 75.
Do we currently charge extra for a Sunday license?
We do.
Yes. It's 1,000, we have 1,000 for a liquor license and 250 for a Sunday.
Well, I agree that just taking a look at the ordinance, I, what'd you say, ours is, what was the year again that...
2019. We don't even have a current code for you guys to look at, update it.
1982?
This, the original one was in 1982.
Yeah, there's still a lot of changes.
So we do, I, I presume there that we should get that information, get it to all of us, and, and go over that, so we can come up with the current, what it is, what it will be, what we want it to be, what we want it to look like. I do agree with that, so.
So you did quite a few cities, so you have other ones that we could be looking at.
What was the highest?
The highest? Thompson, I believe it was...
I think you're right.
Thompson, $5,000 was the first initial license, liquor license.
And we had talked about that, too. I think Dan and I had talked about that, to make sure that people are serious, and when they want that license and they need that license, if they have, if they're going to run a business, to have that, maybe just be the first year. But there's lots to talk about here as far as...
Dan Morrison has all the way up to G2 liquor license.
And we need those definitions as well to...
Can we update them, too, which ones are ungainly and which ones don't?
Yep.
Because this list doesn't have any...
Well, you have to work real hard to find that. It would be easy to have this column over here.
That's what I'm saying.
It's not hard to find out, you just ask for a name.
What did you find out for...
Probably not on a Sunday afternoon at 1:00, I'm working at this.
She's real good about explaining how, which ones do and which ones don't.
So what about going forward, if we just put it on the agenda for discussion, and then do certain sections of it, and just start going through?
Well, let's get first the updated ordinance. We get from 2019 to make sure that...
How do we do that?
Also...
Oh. We found one, our codification. Okay, then you're probably going to be prepared to spend about $10,000.
Okay.
I can't, I have to call in, I think I counted, I know, I told you, 120, maybe?
100, they're almost...
16, whatever it was, since 2019.
That need to be added to the book.
Added to, which...
Can we do it just on the liquor?
No.
No, you have to do the whole thing.
We have to do it from when we last, I think it was 15, 16 ordinance, and we're up to 17.
Well, I think it's something that this, any new council member or older member that's been here a long time, they need to have the current ordinance in front of them.
And we need to put it in writing, what the city wants in that ordinance.
That's right. Well, that, but let's get the first one. We don't, we don't have input from audience, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just had a question.
So what did we sign that paper for?
Oh, and you're, you are absolute, your name is on there. I'm sorry. Your name is on there, and I apologize, Bill. But let's, let, let us finish this, and I'll let you speak. I'm sorry, you're the only...
Sue, just curious, did you ask those other nine communities what their limits were?
Yes, they're all limited. Morrison has 13.
Savannah isn't limited.
Uh-huh. No, no, they're not. But they, they have the council to approve if they want to add more or not.
But if they're unlimited, then what would they be approving?
Huh? If they want to let the business in, they approve that, what type of business is coming. It's in their ordinance. Yep.
I think it's just healthy for us to go through this and look at each one, and what we want to have in, and what we don't want to have in, and, and just put it on the agenda.
And what we feel is pertinent going forward, and...
Mayor Gunderson said, when they fill out the application, it comes to the council and they describe what kind of business and that they're going to put in, and it's yea or no, if they want that.
Okay, so... That's something we can decide.
Is the $10,000 to get the codification up to...
Explain that again to me, Tammy, what that... I'm... I mean, the publishing does that for us. I'm going to have to contact, I think the last time we did it, it was like around 7,500, but that was in 2019, so I'm sure the price has gone up. So I contact them, I tell them how many ordinances we need to update. We have to make a copy of each one of those ordinances and send that to them. At that point, if we say yea or nay, they list it on the website, which anybody can go to there. That's where I go instead of looking in the book.
Right. What's the standard timeframe that they normally update the ordinances? Is there a standard timeframe that the ordinances normally get?
No, no, it's been erratic.
It's, it's requested, right? Usually, it's been requested.
It's been requested. I think we even talked about it days ago.
Well, we can get the current ordinance in front of us without it being in the book and still work on getting this taken care of.
What you mean is the chapter from the book, which is chapter 111.
Okay.
And the ordinances that have amended it since the last time it was codified.
Perfect.
But I wouldn't go to recodification again until you have actually made whatever updates you're going to.
They think that should come secondary. So we can start with our, what, how long is ours, one or two pages?
No.
Eleven pages?
My code of... This is your ordinance.
Without the addition...
No, the addition is about four pages.
Yeah. We've got some additions.
How many additions?
Well, we don't, that's, there's been about 125 ordinances since 2019 that are not in our current ordinance book. They're, they're online, though, correct, Tammy? Have you been online yet?
2019 is online.
Okay. So I think that's number one, so. And in the meantime, we can talk, but we need a motion to approve that, and it needs to be, like I said, this is something that will happen next meeting, so we need to think about that. But I agree, I don't think we should do the codification until we get this complete, so...
Are there any applications waiting in the wings? How many?
Two, but there is a third one that has an application in that has not come in and done fingerprinting, so. There's really three out there.
So I just think that...
Those would be two-day ones and one day.
Something this council needs to be mindful of, that there are business owners waiting for a decision from this council, and we can't, you know, drag it out.
I agree with that, too. So we're going to come prepared with our sleeves rolled up next meeting, and try to count out as many things as we can, but we have to start with the addition of codes. And I think, Tammy, we could probably do that, get them to them sooner than our packet. Could we do that? Tammy?
Well, we just have to make sure we have it worded right when we go to code.
No, 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 no. I just mean the additional ordinances, so that you, when we come to the table, we have all the ordinances in front of us.
Well, let's, let's just work on a liquor one first.
Yes.
Well, that's what she's talking about.
That's what I'm talking about.
Just the liquor, I understand.
Just the liquor.
Just the lesser one.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we, not all of them, yeah. Just the liquor. Okay. Well, at least we have a direction to go, and we can go further on there.
Yes, thanks for all that research. That was good to have the...
And there's also, we need to put in it, I think, is the Illinois recreational canvas, too. We don't have nothing like that either.
Okay. Well, there's, there's lots of updating. So let's go forward. Oh, and Bill, I would like you to talk. I'm sorry. I think I forgot the last time, too. I'm, I'm bad.
I guess you must still want me to talk.
I do want, I do want you to talk.
I'm here for the same reason, I was here the last time, I heard through the grapevine he is going to talk tonight about liquor license. I am not against liquor in no way, shape, nor form, but it sounds like I am. I just want the council to be fair. I am against more liquor license. I'd like my two councilmen from Ward One to vote against that. No more liquor license, we don't need anymore, we got fourteen, am I correct on that?
Negative.
Pardon?
You've got, you've got like eight in, eight right now that are in use.
Yeah.
Well, is there room for fourteen? Only eight.
If you limit it to what they do, there is.
Okay, well then, limit it to eight. Also, I, and I don't know these people, there was somebody that owned the old Kelly's. They sold it to another individual that bought on Tenth Avenue
No.
under the assumption that they could take the liquor license. That's not correct.
That's not correct.
So the people that closed down Kelly's, whoever owned it last, somebody had to close it.
Yes.
They had a liquor license.
Yes, and we took that back.
Okay, so you got that one, nobody else has that.
No.
We took it away.
We took it away.
It disappears.
So, oh, that's why this fourteen went down to eight.
There you go.
So once you take it back, it is no more.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
That's fine.
Well...
Or put it in your ordinance, I don't care if you have a hundred of them, but put them in there, and if somebody wants one, and there's one available, give it to them. This all stems back from when the pizza place down here, Manny's, wanted a liquor license to go out there where the pot shop is. Nope, they wouldn't give it to them. I don't care if they got one or not, I don't make a dime off of it. But if you're not going to give it to them, then you're not going to give one to Dan Dolan for a drive-through coffee.
Well...
And why would you need that for a drive-through coffee? Did or did not Dan Dolan want a liquor license? Now, come on, I was up here a year ago talking about this. Dan Dolan wanted a liquor license for a drive-through coffee.
Oh, for, for, because he wanted gaming in the back.
That's right. He didn't give a damn about the drive-through coffee, he wanted to game it.
Right, that's correct. When you, I want to let you know that the gaming place for all of our parks and rec, that's what that money goes to.
That's great, that's great. But you can't turn somebody down like Manny's, that's an established business, open an established business, and give it to Dan Dolan for a drive-through coffee. Now that's what he put in there, he wanted for.
There's nothing in there now, so we don't have to worry about that.
That's good, we still got to worry about him.
I, no, well, I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
That, there's only, I got one more question. I know that gambling money goes to park and recreation. What does the pot money go to?
Infrastructure. We have seventy-five percent of that going into infrastructure for sidewalks and roads, we have twenty-five percent that we've left in a fund that if we need a new air conditioner, we have that, if we need this, so it's an emergency fund.
That's good, that's good.
Those are all well-spent.
Now get this liquor thing where I don't have to come here no more.
Okay.
I've got better things to do.
We're working on it.
They come here and argue with the city council.
It just needs some attention, and we're going to, we're going to give it to them.
Can I ask a question? I wasn't on the list.
I know you were. I know you came in late. That's...
It would be a sophisticated question.
Okay.
Is there like a ballpark the city is budgeting from marijuana sale income? I mean, since it's been here a while, I mean, has the city generated a million dollars off of marijuana for infrastructure?
No. We, we originally, we originally put in, I think it was eighty thousand?
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you ain't going to do much.
Might be a tiny bit.
That's exactly right.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear the gentleman back here's question, that we totally couldn't ask the question.
Sure.
Trevor.
Sir.
Trevor.
What was your question? My question was, you guys were discussing the cost associated with amending an ordinance, what does that cost? Why is it two-hundred-and-thirty dollars to amend it?
Because it has to, every time it goes to the attorney, the attorney has to write up a new ordinance, and when that, the attorneys don't work for any, nothing.
I, I guess where we came from, we wrote up the ordinances ourselves, and if we thought, if we needed legal, we'd run it by legal, but not just...
Oh, no, everything here is run through the attorney.
We're legal, yes, when we had a city administrator, the city administrator did it.
Exactly, that was my point.
Yes, so...
We just have it in the house.
That was my point.
For years, we have not had an administrator in that administrator position, so that's why.
Okay, that's very good. That's why we charge. Okay, now we're going to go on with all that, we've got lots of homework to do for next, next meeting. We're going to go on to finance, there's no report. Personnel is on page thirty. I think that was what we talked about last time, I just put the minutes in there so that we have them, so everybody could see. We go on to economic development, none, parking rec, none.
I'd like to see if we can have it in October twenty-fifth, for Park Rec, get an update on it, I think. That Ford lot? Is that okay?
Um, I, I had a request, no, that's for tourism, is it?
Okay, for fifteen?
Uh-huh, for fifteen, fine, that's fine, for fifteen.
Very good.
Thank you, Jackie.
Yep, public safety, none, Marina is page thirty-one, any questions? Very none, we go on to tourism, page thirty-two and thirty-three, any questions? They're all in our packets, but we all have time to read them. Zoning, it's none, mayor's report, I have none. Alderman report, there was nothing provided to me to put in the packet, so we have none, she's a police, is none this time. We're singing right along here. Public Works Director is next meeting, Historical Society report, same. And now I need a motion to enter into closed session for personnel and the discussion of the city administrator's duties, please.
So move. Okay.
Okay, and may I have roll call to go in?
Alderperson Mass?
Yes.
Boostra?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Branday?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Ben Hamton?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Sure.
Nice, Renee, thank you for attending.